I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have to be here together. Grateful for the safety and protection we were given throughout this day and so far this week that we were able to gather here. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve in this community, on the school board, administration, and for the opportunities that it awards us. We ask that you please bless those here in our country that are suffering from the hurricane effects. Please bless them with recovery and bless us that we may be able to help them in whatever ways that we can. We ask that you please bless our administrators, our teachers, our students here in this school corporation that they may always be looked over and protected with good health and please bless them with opportunities to be able to learn and to teach. We ask this meeting that will discuss the things which and decide on things that are pleasing unto thee. We ask this in the name of our Son Jesus Christ, amen. All right. Now, future board meetings, November 12th, so this is the only one here in October. November 12th, December 10th, and January 14th, all at six o'clock here at the administration building. There are a few revisions to the agenda under some donations and HR. Public recognition, we've got several donations here that we're going to go through. We have a recommendation to approve a $300 donation from Life Sunday School Class from Bachelor Creek Church of Christ or Metro North Elementary for individual student supplies, shoes, and meals. I'll get an approval for all these after I read them all. A recommendation to approve a $350 donation from Urbana's Fire Department for Northfield Girls Basketball. A recommendation to approve a $300 donation from Urbana Fire Department for Northfield Football. And a recommendation to approve a $350 donation from Urbana Fire Department for Northfield Girls Tennis. Recommendation to approve a $750 donation from Keystone Cooperative for Northfield Football. And a recommendation to approve a $1,000 donation from March McLennan Agency for Southwood Elementary Art Room. Can I get a recommendation in a second?
Second.
Recommendation to approve all these donations, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. And we sure appreciate all those donations and those that helped in most of these activities, extracurricular activities especially. School recognition.
Okay, before we do our Teacher of the Year, I'd like to just share the one student and staff recognition that we received, and that, I am going to do one thing here, I'm going to refresh it to make sure. Okay, so this is from Mr. Martin at Short Creek Elementary. Governor Eric Holcomb and Indiana Secretary of Education Dr. Katie Jenner recently recognized educators for schools where at least 95% of the students demonstrated reading proficiency in 2024 at the State House. We are pleased to say that among those honored schools was Short Creek Elementary. Congratulations to the students and staff members at both Short Creek and Metro North for getting our students off to such a great start in the area of reading. So again, this is for iRead that was taken in the spring of 2024, and so 95%, and actually the exact figure was 95.2% for Short Creek Elementary. So I want to congratulate all the staff and students for that. So that was a great, great honor to have. And now, we're going to recognize from White's Junior Senior High School and our Bridge Program, our staff and teacher spotlight, and we will start with Mr. Tim Giff. So Mr. Tim Giff, if you could come right here. He did write some things, he doesn't like to be recognized, but I had to use my teacher voice today to have him come up here. And even sit on the front row, so. So first of all, First Farmers Banking Trust, we do partner with them and they actually provide some things for us. So we have a staff spotlight $50 voucher for an online store. So anyway, congratulations to that. So, and you don't have to stay for the whole meeting to get that, like other people have said. So that's great. I also would like to say, so, once we have the Teacher of Staff of the Year, we actually allow them to go ahead and write some different things, and I actually give them some prompts. But I just want to read a couple of things that he wrote. He might want to say everything, but I'm just going to read a couple of things and I'll give him a chance to talk to him much later. So everything I do is for the glory of the Lord, and I cannot take credit for that which I'm blessed to do. Thought that was a great statement. Also, I want to recognize this, I'm getting recognized at this time, but I believe it is a group effort. Not one of us can accomplish the great things that we do without the help and support of those around us. I am so thankful to be a part of this team that cares so much for all of our students and helping them accomplish getting over their hurdles in life. And so, again, let's give him a round of applause. Would you like to say anything?
Absolutely not.
He can say something. And we'll say it here, say it here, say it here, we're going to have to have a picture here too. Mr. McDibbitt, would you like to share anything about Mr. Giff?
Absolutely, anything.
All right.
So I'm not surprised to hear Tim is very humble about what he does, but I want to make it very clear to all the board members and all the people here, Tim is absolutely the first to jump in if there's a need, even if it's unseen by others. He will see it and he just jumps in and takes care of it. There was even a simple thing today where he observed where a place there he was needed, he just jumped in and took care of it. And so, that is just who Tim is. I am sure there are many other things he does like that I am completely unaware of. But Tim is a fantastic employee for MSD, great for our staff, and he's great for our kids. So we're really fortunate to have Tim.
We'll piggyback on that. Last year, he has a very mean volleyball serve, helped us a lot of points last year.
They didn't have it this year.
I know, we didn't have it. So the Y Corporate Cup, he was on the team for that, scored a lot of our points. And so, that was a lot of fun, but unfortunately, probably because of his wicked serve, they did not have volleyball this year. So anyway, so congratulations to you. And then, well, what I'm going to do is, when we get done with everybody here, I'll have all four of you stand up here. I will take a picture.
Oh, okay.
Can I sit down? First time he's ever listened to me. Okay, so Teacher of the Year at White's Junior Senior High School, which is the Bridge Program for Josanna Corn, so Josanna, if you can come up here. And again, congratulations, let's give her a round of applause. So, I'm going to read some things that you wrote too. All right, and I'll let Mrs. Boone then share something too. So the excitement, and this is a response that she wrote and just a part of it, so I'm just going to go in the middle of it because I underlined some things I thought were really good. The excitement of being part of the new way of learning and helping students meet their goal of earning their diploma was very intriguing to me, and I wanted to be a part of it. So I started by taking a few special education students on my case load after they were released from their residential program, so we're talking about the Bridge Program. She also says, "We decided early on that we needed to name a name to represent our mission and amongst our group of full-time staff, we quickly decided that the word 'bridge' described this perfectly." As you know, we've kind of changed the names as we, we won't talk about the other names right now. Why are we laughing about that? There's a reason why, I'm going to tell you now. So, "We are there to bridge gaps, give second chances, provide options, and create opportunities for a flexible learning environment that allows students to continue to work towards earning their diploma. And so, the mission and purpose is to maximize the potential of all students, of our students, by establishing a learning environment that supports resiliency, flexibility, self-advocacy, and a passion for lifelong learning." Very good. And some other things I want to read here. Working with this population of students, I have the opportunity to help drug addicts, teen moms, 18-year-olds raising their siblings, teenagers suffering from debilitating illnesses, teens facing legal ramifications, and stories can go on and on. In closing this school year, we will have over 150 students earning their diploma and moving on to the next steps of their life. So, good, congratulations to Josanna Corn. And Mrs. Boone, would you like to share anything about Josanna?
I sure would, it'd be an honor to, so. Actually, I asked a lot of our staff for input because I don't like it just being me, because we are a team. And the nice thing is, everybody who responded, there was a common theme with her characteristics. So I'm just going to read real briefly so I don't mess anybody's opinions up, but it all just kind of meshed together because everything, what everybody sees in Josanna is who she is, and it shines through in every aspect. So Josanna is the true definition of being a servant leader. She is always willing to step in and help even when her own plate is overflowing. She is selfless, kind, caring, and goes above and beyond for students and for the Bridge Program. Her passion as an educator is evident in her devotion to our students and to the program. As we're all aware, we are constantly being given new tools and tasks each year, and she continues to not only adapt, but to thrive as she serves as our academic advisor along with a lot of other things that she does. She works tirelessly to get the job done, and our team can always count on her for encouragement, for a helping hand. She is an exemplary educator, coworker, friend, and more importantly, person. We're just really honored to have her as part of our team.
Thank you. You'd love to share with me? All right, let's give them one more round of applause. Four of you, picture time. Hey, that sounds great. Right there, that's for the pictures. I'm not going to count, I'll just be ready. I'd like to know if I hear this. So does that look okay to you? No, no, fine. All right, well, thank you very much. You're welcome to leave, we're loving today. I know. A restaurant's calling me, I'm not sure which one, but. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you guys, it's on here.
Yep.
All right, public comments on agenda items only. All right, move on to agenda items. Need to get an approval of our last regular meeting on September 24th. May I get a motion in a second for that? So, motion in a second to approve those meeting minutes, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Financial reports. Let's do claims and payroll number six. Any questions on any of those?
No questions, Chris.
Yeah, nothing's out of the ordinary.
Motion in a second to approve those. Got a motion in a second to approve claims and payroll number six, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The financial summary.
Just end of the month for September balances. So we close the month of September. Those where those balances are ending, a lot, I mean, a lot in line with what we're showing on our cash flows, which is good. So nothing, again, really out of the ordinary in relation to any of those funds.
All right, no questions on that. Moving on to our 2025 budget adoption. You don't want to go through that again, do you?
No, much fun too. So, obviously, we had a budget hearing at the last board meeting, and so now it's just time to approve the 2025 budget. And so I would ask for a recommendation to approve that as well as approval of the 2025 bus replacement plan and 2025 capital projects plan. Those were things that we discussed either back in July or August. They've been on our website, we've submitted those to the DLGF. We just need to have final approval of those plans. And then, the Form 4, which is really the approval of the 2025 budget for the most part. And then, the last bit of approval as far as what I need to submit is a resolution for appropriation modification. So once I submit the budget, which I plan on doing this week, then the DLGF has a timeline to get that completed by December 31st. So it could happen anytime between now and then. And usually, we only have 10 days to respond to that. And so, any changes or modifications that need to occur, all this resolution is doing is allowing me approval to make those changes because in that short of window, we may not have had a board meeting in that timeframe, et cetera. So that's not to increase anything in the budget, it's only allowed to make any reductions or modifications that may be needed to complete the budget approval process. So I don't know if you want to approve these separately or all together, but I just need approval of those documents.
Go through these separately. So can I get a motion in a second to approve the 2025 budget? So. Got a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Recommendation to approve the 2025 bus replacement. Got a motion in a second to approve the bus replacement plan. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And the recommendation to approve the 2025 capital projects plan.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor of the capital projects plan, say aye. Any opposed? And the recommendation to approve the resolution for appropriations of the tax rate, Form 4. Got a motion in a second to approve the resolution to appropriations of the tax rate, Form 4, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And the last one was recommendation to approve the resolution for appropriation modification. Motion in a second on that resolution, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, all of those are good and good for Chris. HR. I think there are a few revisions to find on here. Under resignation, Hannah Regal, education, educational dyke. Cut off on competition, fight competition with WMAP. Effective 10/18. Employment. Josue Silva, classroom instructor for Southwood High School, effective 9/30. Rebecca Effley, substitute teacher for all schools, effective immediately. And Valerie Dowell, substitute teacher for the North Schools, effective immediately. Southwood Winter Coaches. Casey Stoffer, head wrestling. Ryan Sweet, wrestling assistant. Ken Norman, head girls basketball. Bob Cole, girls basketball assistant. Sidney Helton, JV girls basketball. Jason Korn, JV girls basketball assistant. Sean Klein, eighth grade girls. Pam Polly, seventh grade girls, basketball. Meredith Norman, sixth grade girls basketball. Brian Bassett, boys basketball assistant. Michael Bart, Barrett, ninth grade boys basketball. Evan Dinton, seventh grade boys basketball. Damon Campbell, eighth grade boys basketball. And Christian Perry, head boys basketball. Rena Markstaller, girls wrestling. And Jim Hogan, JV boys basketball. That was all Southwood, now Northfield Winter Coaches. Rex Reimer, head boys basketball. Matt Brown, boys basketball. Troy Bear, boys basketball. Those were assistants. Kyle Ozwold, boys basketball. Anthony Sorg, junior high boys basketball. Hillary Elsroth, head girls basketball. Van Baker, girls basketball assistant. Daniel Tolson, girls basketball assistant. Ariel Miller, girls basketball, Faith Living, girls basketball. Hopefully, those were all junior high, I remember. If you didn't have that this time. Katie Gray, boys and girls swimming. Ed Schinfield, head wrestling. Craig Dahl, wrestling. Casey Dahl, wrestling. Jim Hollinger, wrestling. Scott Pennington, wrestling. Eric Kurtland, wrestling. Jared Brooks, wrestling. Spencer Miller, wrestling. And Haley Zolman, head chair. Brittany Dieter, junior high chair. Graylin Dieter, volunteer chair. Emily Pennington, sixth grade girls basketball. And Jenny Wilson, sixth grade girls basketball. And that's all. I get a motion in a second, just by HR. Got a motion in a second to approve all the human resources, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
I'm glad you didn't oppose the pool that we put in. So, thank you for that.
Is that thrown in on the deal?
It was a pretty quick bill. Quick bill. Quick bill.
All right, and your panel for the F P.
Yes. I did, you get the last laugh.
Okay. Reports, Heartland Career Center. Matt, anything?
Not this part.
Okay, superintendent?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things here. First of all, we actually, MSD of Wallace County, I got to get rid of this so I can do something else real fast. We actually made them Barton Co. film a website, so, or Facebook post, so. LinkedIn, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. So, the only reason I put this up here, we had frost this morning. That's frost on our, on the roof, here at the office.
Okay. Good insulation, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. So, you know, we talk about locker rooms and we talk about the weight room and things like that, and so I just wanted to put some nice pictures up here. We talk about it about every time, just to say that, you know, the work continues, but obviously, that's red, so that's Southwood and blue, Northfield. And then, just a couple of pictures of a couple of locker rooms. Obviously, a lot different than what we had before, so it was really good, and appreciate the posting of that, so I just want to share that. And then also, just want to mention that tennis courts, of course, continue, and a lot of progress on that as far as, you know, some of the fencing and different things like that. And then, two other things. First of all, our A B count, of course, was October 1st, and so that has all been certified. And so, for traditional schools, from fall of last year to fall of this year, our traditional schools are up seven students in a combination of those five, which is great. Especially the situation that we're in, in our county, as far as just population and different things that are going on. And then, we are down though overall because, as you heard from Josanna Corn when we talked about the Teacher of the Year there, we graduated about 150. Tanya, it might have been more than that, right? Because it goes all the way up to October 1st. So that was written back in May or actually in June, so I'm sure we had more. Do we happen to have a final number on that?
I can come up with it, we're around 170.
Okay, around 170. So having 170 graduate from the Bridge Program obviously reduces the number of students that we have in the program. And so, from last year, we're down about 41 total. Plus, we do not have Compass Rose anymore. And so Compass Rose, there were six students last year in the fall, and of course, there's no Compass Rose anymore at Josiah White's, and so we don't have those six students. So the combination of the increase of the traditional school with a little bit of a decrease with the Bridge and with Compass Rose actually went down, a total of 41. Residentially, just at White's, to give you an idea though too, there's still right in there, actually, three more students from last year as far as that goes. And then also, just wanted to mention that last Friday was the last day for the nine weeks, so we're already into the second nine weeks, on Thursday, parent teacher conferences and professional development day. And then, of course, next week is fall break for all schools except for White's Junior Senior High School, but they actually have a little mini fall break. They will go to school Monday and Tuesday, and then they'll be off the rest of the week after that. And then, we'll get apart again on October 23rd. So that's all I have for tonight.
All right, and since Tim's not here, so we'll skip the curriculum. Under new business, recommendation to approve the updated 2023-2025 teacher contract.
So yes, the, we had our hearing last meeting in September. The teachers did ratify and it was unanimous. And so, our recommendation is that you approve the second year of the 23-25 school year contract. And basically, what's going to happen is that the starting salary will jump from $45,000 to $47,000, and then all teachers in the collective barbeque unit will get a $2,000 increase. And there were no other changes because that was the opener for the second year of the contract.
Nothing on language or phase?
No, because it was only, it was only, yeah, next year, everything is open again. And really, in a contract, when you talk about language, it's basically, the way the law is written now, it's just salary and benefits, basically. I mean, that can be some little language, but it's, maybe that's what you. Yeah, it was a bit, yeah, so we can't do this.
Any other questions on the teacher contract? I want to approve, Scott. Got a motion in a second to approve the teacher's contract for this year. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Recommendation to approve bid phase number three with vendors.
One thing I want to give you, I know, I'm going to go ahead and give you, there was one, when we downloaded it to PDF. You just want to see that, I know that's a lot of paper, probably shouldn't have. There was one page that was, the PDF kind of, I don't know, it just filtered some other things on there, so made it confusing, so. There are emails, so that was on page four, that was kind of messed up on the PDF version. And it wasn't from YDAN, for some reason, our conversion, when we downloaded it. I didn't like the looks of it, so I'll bring this off. We can recycle all this paper if we want to. I do recycle a lot.
It's pretty well a lot, it seems, to maximum. Do you want to change the scope of work?
Like a pool?
The commons there, they didn't really. Yeah, we could have made those retention problems a little bigger, they could have been like a pond.
There you go. There's the, there's the page in PDF that was all. So that's only just a signature page. Yeah, I know, but just want to make sure it's all in.
So that really concludes our last phase of bidding for the project. You know, this has been a long time coming for the most part. Things that we've been discussing and working on. I know Barton Co. and YDAN for over close to a year, if not more. At this point in time to get to this point where we can really then start putting shovels in the ground and constructing.
When do you expect that to start?
Early this Monday. Right now, we're, you know, we're going to put some stone columns in the ground to reinforce the ground soils. We got the stone column drawings here recently. We're trying to coordinate that with some existing smits or remains and stormings we have to replace. So we need to, some of those conflict right now, we're working with Barton Co. to overcome those conflicts, and hopefully, as early as Monday we'd like to start.
And we do appreciate everything that YDAN and Barton Co. have been working with us to get to this, to this evening, although we've already started things with different phases, but this is the largest phase and most timely phase.
Any questions on any of that? I think it's all, basically what we talked about in the last meeting, what we were extra. actually doing with all of this.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommendation, bid phase three, the vendors.
Okay, a motion, you get a second? Got a motion in second to approve bid phase number three, vendors. All those in our favors, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
I like to comment, thank you guys for all the work, picture what you guys put in, going through all that stuff, that took a lot of time and effort.
I think they got tired of hearing from us last.
That's okay. It's probably not the last time. Glad we got through this part, and we can actually get something going. I think it's gonna be a good project for the school district. All right, we'll go, we have a recommendation to approve an overnight extended out-of-state trip for Southwood High School to Tokyo, Japan, spring break, twenty-twenty-six, or fall break. I suppose that's twenty-twenty-five, right?
Twenty-twenty-two.
Or twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, okay. Can I get a motion to approve that? Got a motion in second to approve that out of state, out of country. Should be out of country. Yeah, field trip. For Southwood. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And the last one here is a recommendation to approve an overnight extended out-of-state field trip for Northwood, Northfield eighth grade to Washington, D.C., March sixteenth through nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Can I get a motion in second? Second. Motion in second to approve that overnight extended out-of-state field trip for Northfield eighth grade, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, passes. One item of unfinished business, Heartland Career Center operating agreement. We've been talking about this and tabling it, and talking about it and tabling it.
I wrote a few things down. It's kind of been a difficult decision for me to, which way I'd like to go on this. I think we should leave it as it is, the way the Heartland Agreement has written. There are several benefits to changing, such as not duplicating meetings, possibly more efficient in dealing with financial issues and et cetera. But the reasons I don't think it should change are also numerous. To start with, having a board member on it makes the board more connected. I value that connection. These meetings are open, are to be open to the public meetings. With the superintendent's meeting during the day, they'd be open to the public, but it'd just be hard for the public to get there. That being said, no one shows up anyway. I asked several staff members their opinion, most didn't think it would matter, but much, wouldn't matter much, but there were a few that didn't like the idea. They thought having the wait is not would be best. I gather that they like the outside opinions rather than just administrators, and that could be a valid point. I'm hoping with the change, the threat of change, we will get better attendance and participation of other boards. I hope the superintendents will collectively work together and try to figure out ways to get the other needed repairs funded in short order. I would like that to be done no more than forty-five years, and it shouldn't take forty-five years to make those decisions. So, that's my opinion, right or wrong, but you asked me the address. And it took me a long time to come to that, because I see the advantages of the other.
I thought this through, and on my part, I wanted to vote to just remain the same because of the fact the superintendent can be appointed as the school representative, because that's the best for that school corporation. And so I felt, well, it can be done if, I don't know who is pulling attendance, and I don't need to know. But the superintendent ought to say, okay, hey, I'll represent our school, it doesn't mean, and then it goes, it goes on, I guess, without changing the actual meaning.
Correct. And the attendance issue has been one the last two years. Couple of people have changed on there, and I just don't think their heart was into being there for their schools. That just, my, you know, and I'm not gonna say who, but it was just kind of disappointing. And that's why Ms. Sturge presented her thing, because we had a couple of meetings, we had the delay, and, because we didn't have forums, so. So, basically, we don't have to do anything.
It, it might be, well.
Where we just want to vote each one of those down. Because we had two proposed to us.
I think there's a lot of things that could happen, but one thing is you could, yeah, I mean, you can leave it go, but then people might not know really what that means.
Okay.
And I guess I'm gonna look at Josh a little bit. One thing you could do is just vote to.
I think the closest thing to do would be to do one motion to, to, you know, reject any proposed amendments in the operating.
Yeah.
I want that motion to reject any proposed changes to the operating agreement.
These two.
These two.
Right.
That would present a. A second then.
All right, we got a motion in second to reject those revising, revised amendments, I guess, or resolutions.
Amendments, yeah, that's it.
To the Heartland Career Center for their operating agreement. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Guess you don't want to let them know that we're, we're leaving it the same.
It, it can still pass, though, right?
Yes, there's two other.
There's two others to go, so it still could pass, but.
But they, one of them has already suggested something else.
Correct, so that one, more than likely, they would not vote on that. But that's just one board member. Does any one, any board member can do amendment, doesn't have to be a group effort, it can be one person, so.
All right. I don't think we have anything else. Board policy, any public comments? Ideas for board members?
Tony, you mentioned about, well, we've discussed numbers being down. Is there any kind of, I've written this up too frequently, any kind of recruiting help or anything that we need there? Because there's more competition in that field, anywhere you're in, more and more directors.
There is a little bit more. I still think that we probably have a niche that we serve that a lot of other school corporations follow. So, we have school corporations that continue to refer students to us once they have expelled them. So, it's just a matter of rebuilding, I think, at the moment.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not saying that it's going poorly, I'm just always pushing for.
One, one thing that they had, Mrs. Boone, maybe she was gonna share that, I interrupted them, good. Okay, Mrs. Boone and Mrs. Langbrooke got together, and they actually developed a marketing plan to just share the information to many, many schools, assistant principals, they have some other ideas, and what they want to do, just to share what our program is. Because it is a different kind of niche than what a lot of people have as far as that goes. I mean, we, we are concentrating on those students that are credit recovery and not just, not your students that are gonna be on some kind of a online school, it's more of a credit recovery. And you heard what Mrs. Corn was talking about with a, a lot of students that we, you know, we work with. And so it is a different kind of niche and, you know, connection with, you know, White's Junior Senior High School.
We like to do it what it's meant to do, graduate kids.
Yeah.
Give them a second chance.
They're doing too good of a job, that's why.
Pay attention. I wish we didn't have to stop at the state line.
Don't have to, but we won't get anything.
You did it for three.
Tony is fantastic, I mean, we all enjoy the graduation, it's something to be proud of for our school.
Definitely in the, the program. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn.